Good evening, everyone. Today is October 2nd, 2025. The time is 6:01, and this is the Cushinget Planning Board. This meeting is being recorded for future viewing on the town's YouTube page, cable channel, and we are also live via Teams. Can I get a motion to open the planning board meeting?
I'm making a motion to open the planning board meeting.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Can we all introduce ourselves, please?
Victoria Alfaro, town planner.
Peter Gaiat, a member.
Steve Boucher, a member.
Mark Francois, chairman.
Ryan Dishamps, a member.
Rick Ellis, vice chairman.
We have a full board tonight, which is nice. Gentlemen, we were all set the minutes from September 18th. Myself, Brian, and Steve were the only ones in attendance. Did anybody have any issues with the minutes? I looked them over, and I thought they were pretty well done, yep.
I'll make a motion to approve. As of September 17th, uh, 18th, excuse me.
I second that. We got a motion, we got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Upstaying, upstaying. All right, moving right along. Public hearing. Do I have to make a motion to open a public hearing? No, it's been open, right?
Yeah, just call it back to order.
Call it back to order. Site clear review and special permit for 1094 Main Street, Clem's Way, map seven, lot 15. Advocate is Clem's Way Solar LLC, Rewild Renewables. Owner is Brookside Realty Trust. Representative is Vales &amp; Thomas, Inc. Scope of the work is a proposed five-megawatt AC solar array. Now, this proponent has been in front of us for an informal meeting three or so months ago. They have made their plans, and we have had GAF Engineering look them over. And before it does, my friend, please introduce yourself for the viewers out there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Zachary Farkas, Rewild Renewables, representing the applicant, with the Greg Sampson attorney with Sullivan and Worcester. Thank you for letting me rearrange your furniture a little bit. Hopefully, we can see cameras and the plan set.
I think we're good.
Great. So as you know, I've been in front of this board a number of times before. This will be the third solar project. We have a series of three that we've been working on in Cushinget for quite a while now. So we're quite familiar with the process, with the boards and whatnot. So my goal tonight is to introduce you guys to the site, talk about what we've done from a development and diligence standpoint, talk about what we've done from a permitting standpoint, review the letter that you have in front of you from GAF Engineering, and then talk a little bit about some of the details as you guys want to get involved or as the public wants to get involved. The site we're talking about, we're proposing a solar project on an approximately 60 acre parcel at the intersection of Clem's Way and Main Street, showed on the plan in front of you. This is a rendering of some of the details of the plan set, the heavy red being the parcel line, and then the three solar arrays shown on the fields and the back lot. The official address is 1094 Main Street, and the property is owned by Brookside Realty Trust, as the chairman opened. The site is bordered on the west, which would be the left side of the plan you're looking at, by the Long Plains Cemetery, and it's the landowner's frontage, which currently hosts two-family house and a landscaping and contractor thing. To the north, there are four residential lots. We've been in contact, and we've met at some other public hearings, the four landowners to the north. That area to the north is heavily wooded, and then, as you can see, as you move over toward the right of the plan set or as you move east, you'll see that kind of fourth lot to the north is a fully cleared construction lot right now, used for construction materials, landscaping materials, et cetera. On the east, there's another construction yard just off what would be, I think it's Cushing Drive is the road that runs perpendicular to the project's eastern property line. There's a solar project on Cushing Road right at the corner, and then there's another solar project, I believe, proposed at the very bottom of Cushing. So we're kind of in this area, close to the substation, where there's a fair amount of solar being proposed. To the south, there's a single lot that's largely undeveloped, wooded. It is a residential lot with a home off Main Street, but as you can see...
Can you point to that for me?
Southern lot right here. And so there is a home right on the corner down here. But we haven't been in contact. Here's the construction laydown area, the construction lots up here, the four wooded lots to the north, and we've got the Long Plains Cemetery and one neighbor that I've been in touch with, a fair amount who's not here tonight, Deb Perry. She's probably been in contact with the board. We've been working together a lot through the Conservation Commission process. So along with the landscaping yard and the two-family home at the westernmost portion of the property, the property also hosts about 50 trailer homes, mobile homes, that are off Clem's Way, which is the private driveway you see running just along the south of the property line here. These buildings you see here are the plus or minus 50 units. Our area for development are the two hayfields, kind of affectionately known here as the west hayfield, the center hayfield, and then to the east, there's a back woodlot that's been partially cleared about two years ago, maybe two and a half years ago now. It's taken a while to get kind of through the diligence development process, but there's been about three, two or three acres cleared in that back woodlot, but other than that, you can see some real new growth right down the middle of it, that kind of heavy green. The reason for the shapes is because the wetlands are quite rampant on the site. There's wetlands that are coming in and out and around, and the majority of the wooded area to the north and the south is wet as well. Wetlands kind of extend off property with itself. So it's at those two hayfields in the back lot that we're focusing our solar development and really focusing tonight on kind of what we would call the impacted areas. From a development standpoint, I'm going to start at the top level. So there's many, many authorities with jurisdiction, as you all know, when you develop a solar project. So I've been working at the federal level with the FAA, Federal Aviation Administration, to make sure there's no hazard to the introduction of a solar project in this area. So we've got our confirmation of no hazard there. We've been in communication with FEMA to confirm floodplains and make sure we're not working in any floodplain areas. So all of our development areas in that zone X. And then finally, at the federal level with the United States Fish and Wildlife Service, where we evaluate rare endangered species, animal, plant, et cetera, that could be in the area or on the site. We end up reviewing their documents, finding out what species could be in the area, and then coordinating with them to make sure any proposed construction will have no effect, are the key terms, on those species. At the state level, we work with what's called NHTSP, the Natural Heritage, that does a very similar review of plant and animal species that are endangered or threatened at the state level. We go through a very similar process, and we receive what's called a no-effect determination from Natural Heritage as well. Also, at the state level is Massachusetts Historical, where we communicate with them. You can imagine, there's a lot of history in New England, and we make sure that the development of our property will not have any name impact on valuable areas from a historic standpoint, whether they be colonial or Native American. So we received all clear at the state level and the federal level. And we get finally down to the local level, Town of Cushinget, where we have, where there are two boards with jurisdiction on this project, the first being the Conservation Commission and the second being this board. At the conservation level, we've made a ton of progress. It was very important for me to get conservation work and Conservation Commission work, Wetlands Protection Act work, done ahead of coming to this board because of how tricky the wetlands were. So we've actually gone through three rounds with Conservation Commission. In early 2024, in March, we submitted our ANRAD and completed the ANRAD process in June of 2024. So ANRAD is when we delineate the wetlands, we present it to the town, to the Conservation Commission. GAF Engineering, again, went out to the site, locked our wetland lines, and approved our ANRAD. After that, we went through a determination process due to a request for determination to the Conservation Commission with respect to a small intermittent stream to confirm it was not perennial. So in October of 2024, the Conservation Commission opined that it was not perennial, and thus, we had our setbacks set from edge of bank and edge of wetlands so that we could end up understanding exactly what upland area we had available to develop. That's when we iterated this kind of final, or first iteration, I should say, final with CONSCOM, first with Planning Board, and we came and met with the Planning Board. Prior to that, we did have a staff meeting in March of 2025, where we met with Victoria, we went with her counterpart at Conservation, we also met with police, fire, board of health, building inspector, to get kind of general comments and whatnot. As you guys are aware, I've been in front of this board and in this town many times, so there were no surprises. We know about ring roads, about all the details that town staff requires in the projects, and those have all been worked into the plan set you guys see. After that, as the chairman mentioned, I was before you guys for the informal meeting, where I had just a simple plan set, let you guys know this was coming, let you know what we were doing, and got your general feedback. We submitted finally to this board in June of 2025, so June of this year. So we're finally up to the present. Throughout this process, the town does a great job of coordinating with a peer review who can review for all AHJs at the town level. So Bill Madden and his team at GAF Engineering have been performing a peer review of this project since it kicked off with CONSCOM, which was back in June-July timeframe. So we've made a lot of progress with Bill. He issued his first peer review letter to us that was supplemented a couple days later with some more information. We responded in early September with kind of a full response package, and then we received his second peer response letter, a peer review response letter today. And that should be the letter that you guys have in front of you. And that kind of finally brings us to today's planning board meeting. Obviously, we've been trying to have this introductory or this first meeting for a couple weeks now, which is why there's a little bit of lag. I can't imagine this board's used to seeing a fully written-out peer review letter, let alone the second iteration of it on a first presentation. But all in all, it's a good thing. We've made a lot of progress with Bill, and I think it's really nice when a town works with a peer review engineer who can look at things from multiple perspectives. Some jurisdictions hire three different peer reviewers for three different boards, and you can imagine the conflict that Greg and I have to work through. So that brings us up to today, introduces you to the property, the project, and gives you a little bit of development history. I'm going to pause there to answer any questions before I do kind of a rundown of the peer review letter itself. Is there anything kind of at the upper level from the board that you guys would like me to provide a little bit more clarity on from maybe your notes from your review of the plan set? And the answer doesn't have to be yes. We can certainly go through the peer review as well.
Setbacks.
Yep. So there's, as I'll get to at the end of the peer review letter, you know, I guess jumping to the punchline, the peer review letter is effectively signing off on the project. GAF Engineering looked at kind of three elements of the project. They looked at it from a notice of intent standpoint, from a stormwater control standpoint, and they looked at it from a site plan review special permit standpoint. Looking at my notes, there's about 10 comments on each. There were 10 NOI-related comments, there were 10 stormwater-related comments, and there were nine, we'll call them, planning board-related comments. Of the 10 NOI comments, three of them were very technical, very small items, add a call out to the plan set, et cetera. For stormwater, again, three very small technical requirements that asked us to add some detail to the plan set, provide a little bit of context, tie things up with the soil samples that we had out there with the geotechnical review we had out there, et cetera. So very, very technical-based. At the planning board section, that kind of opening section where he reviews site plan review and special permit, there are nine comments. Almost everyone is either, everyone but one is either closed or deferred to the board. The one open item has to do with sound and sound attenuation fences, and that's one item I'd like to talk about with the board in detail. But the big one from my perspective is setbacks. We comply completely with the bylaws. We comply completely with the memo, or we've had almost full sign-off from the peer reviewer. The one item that is material is we are asking this board for a reduction in setbacks from property lines. The town bylaw sets 150 feet, technically 300 feet from a public way, which we meet or exceed, so we're not asking for any reduction from the 300-foot setback. We are asking...
Let me stop you there.
Sure.
The public way is Main Street.
Main Street.
You're not considering Clem's Way the public way.
No, we provided pretty detailed feedback from a legal standpoint that defines Clem's Way as a private way and not under the 300-foot requirement. So Clem, excuse me, Main Street on the left side of this plan, on the west side of the plan is the public way per the bylaw. And so if you think about, if you just walk, I'll point it out.
Yep.
If we move here, 300 feet is just inside here, where when we get to the solar modules, which aren't shown here because it just gets a little busy, we're well over 300 feet. So what we are asking for relief from is the 150-foot setback. And I'm going to flip to a plan set that I marked up to show a little bit of what the impact is of what we're asking for. We've got some details I can flip to as we move from array to array. But ultimately, with help from my six-year-old daughter, we colored pink the racks or modules that are inside the 150-foot solar setback as defined in the Town of Cushinget bylaw. And so I think there's three points that I'd like to make before certainly hearing your responses. The first is just making very clear that the board can reduce the setback if you guys so choose. I don't need a variance with a capital B. I don't need to go, or we don't need to go to the ZBA, et cetera. It's fully within the board's right to reduce it or not reduce it. The second point is we're only talking about the solar modules. It's very clear from national law, from precedent in town, and from the recent clarifications made in the Town of Cushinget zoning bylaws that that 150-foot setback applies to the module, which is important because it means it doesn't apply to the road, it doesn't apply to the fence, it doesn't apply to any screening, it doesn't apply to any stormwater features. So that's where we, that's where things get nuanced here. And I'm of the opinion that these bylaws cover 80 or 90% of sites. They certainly cover undeveloped sites, but when you're approaching a previously disturbed site like this, sometimes these rules get a little tricky. So basically, the array, if our request is reduced, the development footprint does not change at all. We just remove the pink panels. And what's left is simply the existing open field. So the reason why I'm asking for relief, and I feel comfortable asking for relief, I feel like it's a reasonable request, is that if we take the west field as the first example, probably the most egregious, if we take that western field to your left, it's already cleared. We're clearing no trees. So basically, the only difference would be, instead of having that, I'm looking at the numbers, it's exactly 75 feet. There's just another 75 feet of open space. It doesn't, to me, my opinion, it doesn't change anything with the project. It doesn't make the view any different. And ultimately, there's not a material impact of improvement to applying that setback in this case. That's why I feel like it's reasonable for me to ask. In order for us to try to balance things a little bit, if you can see the yellow highlight, instead of a typical solar fence, that's a stockade wood fence that will match up with the panels, an opaque fence. So if there is any changing of seasons or if there is any impact from a view shed standpoint, that should make things feel, make things feel a lot better.
I'm going to interrupt you.
Please.
The closest neighbor to that back fence that you're talking about, the northerly, is pretty far. So there's a lot of woods in between.
So, exactly. That's why we went ahead and we added this sheet to kind of bring... Sorry, I'm standing in front of the camera.
That's okay, there's no one on Teams.
Okay. Bring a little context to the ask. And I totally understand if this was a wooded site with tons of residents who were built right up to the lot line. I mean, we just went through this on Middle Road, right? I wasn't asking for 150-foot reduction, 150-foot, because there's so many people there, it would simply, wouldn't let us build that farm and screen it. In this case, we've got four, what I call sensitive receptors, right? Four residential homes. The first one is Ms. Perry's, who I met with in person at her site to really talk it through. Each one of these stations is 100 feet. So the only difference is we're either 450 feet away or 500 feet away through open field. There's no tree clearing here. Similarly, with the two northern properties, Residio and Burns. This is Burns. These are effectively 750 feet roughly away from the property through all fully forested woodland. And then from the other, it is a little bit more than 950 feet. So considerable setbacks make me feel comfortable to ask the board for some relief there. And again, there's no tree clearing. So when you think about, I'm going to flip back. When you think about this middle field as being... There's only a couple panels that are removed. So we're talking, you know, a very, very minimal reduction, I think. Just so I can couch it properly, we're asking for the western field, and this is important, we're not asking for a total waiver from that requirement, we're asking for a specific reduction for each field. I think I'm really sensitive to the fact that if I was on a board, I wouldn't want to create any precedent for a future project. So we make it very specific to the site. For the western field, I'm asking for a reduction from 150 feet to 75 feet. For the northern field, I'm asking for a reduction of 150 feet to 115 feet. And then this is the least contentious of the three from my perspective because of the construction use to the north and the construction use to the west. Trees have already been cleared all the way up to my property line. There's a, you know, I don't know if you guys have been at this property. I imagine you have from the other work over here, but very heavy construction use over here. And so we're asking for a reduction on the eastern field from 150 feet to 40 feet. So I hope it puts a little bit of perspective. We've really kind of engineered these things to really minimize, but I hope that puts a little bit of perspective on our request. And I'm just going to leave it at this screen as I, as I know Ms. Burns is here. And again, the, not only will there be, you know, a very little reduction, we've got this opaque stockade fence, which, and from my, from my standpoint, removes any doubt of any visual impact, even if the landowner was to clear all the way to the property line, which we know we can't because to the north, it's riddled with wetlands in a similar manner that our site was. So I guess I'll stop there.
What's this, what's this construction area over here?
Yeah, that's residential.
Oh, this is all residential people over here?
Yeah, but the use. I was over there today.
One's a farm, and the other one is...
One's an active farm, and then the area to the northeast corner, you can only see the bottom half of it, it keeps going. You've got tons of landscaping materials, tractor, not tractor-trailers, but trailers are there, storage trailers. They do have a residential use back here, but they use this back area for a lot of storage. And this is the farm, this is the barn, and there's often livestock grazing over there.
Okay, thank you.
But yeah, that's exactly why we wanted to put together this view shed plan, just to understand the context of what we're asking. And I think we don't want to kind of defer to kind of the legality of the request. I'd like to try to follow the logic of the request. But from a legal standpoint, there is a balance between reasonable, reasonable, we'll call it entitlement of the project and not reasonable. And obviously, the state makes sure that any conditions or any requirements of design have to be reasonable. And from my standpoint, especially with the case of these are already open fields, the difference between granting the setback...
Well, two are open fields.
Two are open fields.
The third one, you're asking to cut down a lot of, a lot of extra trees.
Totally. I'm focusing mainly on the two middle, the two fields because those are the neighbors that I've been working with out of the meeting.
Helen, you have any questions?
Can I say something on the planning board?
Yeah, my question's still about the setback.
Yeah, hold on a second, just so you know how this works. He went through his spiel. We'll ask our questions.
Okay.
Once we're just about done, we'll go to you and whoever else is here.
Oh, thank you.
I definitely want to hear from you, so don't worry, I won't forget.
My question's still about the setback. I mean, you're showing that this is what's going to be cut off if we do that. It doesn't seem like it's a whole lot that's going to be cut off. And to me, holding the, you're the second person through on these new bylaws, and we're already being asked to waive them.
I don't know the context of the first request, and that's why I'm focusing so much on this, on the context. But it is a material amount from where I stand. Ultimately, from a project standpoint, it's about 20% of the project module standpoint. So it's enough for me to care. If it was a smaller, I totally agree, I wouldn't create a fight for something small.
And I'm not arguing the point that it's enough for you to care. It's just, in my eyes, it just, it seems like if we waive this, the next guy coming through is going to be asking the same thing.
It's tough. I mean, these setbacks, right? These, what would be called, you know, considerable setbacks in a bylaw, it's tricky. And as I said, when we had a site that we didn't have to ask for any relief, we didn't ask for that relief. In this case, I need to ask for the relief because it's a material impact to the project to enforce a setback which I believe is unreasonable for this site. I don't believe it's reasonable or unreasonable for every site. I just simply believe it's unreasonable for this site.
But I just think everybody else could come in with the same argument and say, well, this is unreasonable or that's reasonable.
Maybe, but I think like, the point is, certainly for the fields, is there a difference between 150 feet of space and 75 feet of clear space? And I don't know the answer to that right now. We're kind of at the opening part of that discussion, but you obviously see where I'm coming down on, and you see where my request is. And the real tricky part is the setback only applies to the solar modules. For a site like this, that's incredibly space-constrained from an upland standpoint, we've, you know, through all the peer review with GAF, they have very, very high standards in this town to make sure my stormwater is above and beyond the requirements. And that obviously comes from some poor development in the past. But so much space is taken up from our stormwater features that we're just, we're really pressed for acres. And so a solar project like this, that 20% of the extra space that I can get for what I don't feel like is a material and negative impact to the neighbors, you know, it would be really easy for me not to ask for it, and I could almost guarantee an approval very quickly, right? But it is important to me, very important to me.
If I may? Please. I still, I got, I'm with Brian, I got an issue with the setback request. Today, it looks like this. Could be next year, could be five years, could be 10 years down the road.
Yep.
There's a lot, it looks like there's a lot of land that basically could be opened up to put a development back in.
It is wet. But, your point's taken.
And that's, you know, and that's how I look at this.
Yep.
Granted, if this was never going to get developed, be one thing, but there's private property here that people have the, if they at some point have the opportunity to get the right price for it, they're, they're not going to have the 150-foot setback from their property. This is, this is truly the property line right here. Anybody else want, it's, they're going to be, that's just how I look at it right now.
Yeah.
Back to it, and we were, again, when we did this current bylaw, it was all about setbacks.
Totally.
You know, and the new one hasn't hit, that this is, that doesn't sit the new one, the new one's going to actually be to the fence.
Yeah, so...
So the new bylaw is going to be there. Right now, we have it to the array.
Yep.
Okay?
Yeah, not interrupt you, but we have some people in this town that are... Yeah, not to interrupt you, but we have some people in this town that are extremely against solar.
Yeah.
And you have those that are not, both sides. There are people that actually wanted those extra 20 feet, for the setback to be from the fence.
Yep.
And not the actual array, which that isn't in effect yet, but it will.
Yep.
And against the, I didn't mean to cut you off, but you had mentioned precedence.
Yep.
My biggest fear is precedence.
Totally.
And you come in and you say, and I agree, if there's ever gonna be a place where there's gonna be a solar field, a farm, it should be in an empty field with no trees. I, I like that. I don't much care for clearing that, but it is what it is.
Yep.
If there's ever gonna be a place where there's gonna be a solar farm, it should be an empty field. But the next guy is gonna come in and he's gonna be, you know, he's gonna have his reasons for his setbacks and, and again, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, one of the issues with me right now is the setbacks.
Yep. It's, and it's challenging for me too, right? Like, it's, it's not often where I have a site where there's one singular issue. And if that one singular issue wasn't as painful to me as it is, I would, I would try to make everyone's lives a little bit easier and acquiesce could not ask. And so, because of what's already gonna happen on the site, that's where I just feel like, you know, to, to the gentleman's point, if, if the future landowners somehow are able to get relief from wetlands requirements and whatnot, and do want a clear cut in development and develop down to this property line, if, if my request is rejected, the only difference is an extra 50 feet of open space on the field. And that's, and that's just where like, fundamentally, I feel like there is some good precedent The addition of the, of the stockade fence, I know on Marion Road, I gave you guys an example, excuse me, of the berm and fence, right, a project we did in Rochester a couple years ago, we showed the photo. Driving in today, I drove past a project on Marion Road in Rochester, which is right on the street, which has the, the stockade fence. It's not big enough, it's a six-foot stockade fence, so you can see a strip of the modules on top, and that's why we've got the eight or the 10 here to make sure you can't see anything. But again, that's gonna be there. That was when I felt like a reasonable trade in that scenario, where the project's already there, if there is a future development, the project's already there, everyone's understanding exactly what they're clearing and developing to. And we do have on our property the visual buffers that would, would render, would render the project invisible, even if this was all cleared. And I think the context of it not being cleared and the context of it being wet and being almost impossible to develop, helps me feel better about the ask, but it doesn't have to do that to you guys.
Now that you brought up the visual, the 50 or so trailers that are up front here, what do we have preventing them from seeing the field?
They can see it. I think the, the landowner and I at this board's request really worked hard to, to share with everyone at the informal meeting, that was the number one item that I took away from that meeting, was you guys wanting to make sure there was coordination with the folks on that are already at the site and not. And so our landowners done a really nice job posting plans. I don't know exactly what he's done, but it's been communicated to me that he's had meetings and presented to that group to understand exactly what's happening.
So basically, you're telling me that nobody, not one of these trailer parks, have an issue with waking up in the morning, looking out there, where no one's seeing a solar field?
I think that's probably too strong a statement, I can't speak with people, and it's probably not true, but I think, I think I, I paraphrase it by saying, the folks know that they're on the property, they're renting on the property, nothing's forcing them to stay on that property, it is mobile homes that can be moved, so it's been communicated, so.
One of my issues, one, sorry, one of my issues of continuing special permits, we continued under your request, I think, at least once, possibly twice, and we had to continue once because we didn't have a full forum. One of my, one of the reasons why I hate constantly moving these public hearings for a permit, is the first day, we had a room full of people. A room full of people. A lot of them, I'm assuming, were from the solar park or a butters.
Not for this project, this is the first meeting.
No, it's postponed.
Yeah, we had a couple of butters come in thinking that you guys were gonna be here, but it had...
Right. And they didn't see, they didn't see they had gotten postponed. And I sat in on a couple of the conservation meetings, room was full. There's one person here, I'm glad you're here.
I was a runner, I just, I, I learned at the last moment, so look at me, I came like this, but...
But that's one of the reasons why, that, I, I, and again, I'm not putting blame on you because I know sometimes we need time, and we had to postpone it ourselves because we didn't have a full forum. I totally understand. I have a hard time believing that nobody in that trailer park is gonna be upset about waking up and looking at a, at a, at a solar field when they wake up in the morning. I have a hard time accepting that. And like Steve had mentioned, one of the main reasons why we redid the solar bylaw, one of them, and the biggest issue was the setbacks. And two was the visual. There's a lot in the new bylaw that prevents butters from, people don't wanna, people don't like to look at solar farms. And, and a lot of the things that we try to enforce is, you know, not affecting people's sight. So not having any type of screening on this entire run, I'll tell you bothers me.
Just one follow-up question to your, to your comment, you, you referred to a new bylaw. So it's my understanding that this is the second project under the new bylaw, when you say new, you mean the new, new, new coming? That's...
New is the latest one, that we just redid a year or two ago.
Yeah, okay, so Middle Road's...
Yeah, not the, not the one from this past town meeting.
Totally, okay, I just want to make sure, I just want to be clear that this and the Middle Road's project...
The, the first two.
Yep, the first two, and, you know, as I said, the only thing in that bylaw that we're not meeting or exceeding is the setback.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a good set of plans. One more question, and you had brought it up at the first meeting, which was the well that they had to move.
Yeah, I mean, I've got a few comments here.
Oh, you do? Go right ahead.
The wells are, are one.
You're up.
Have, have you, well, while we're talking about wells, have, has there been any approach to the division of water supply about relocating or creating two new source wells?
There has, so the existing, there's an existing...
I know where the existing ones are.
For the benefit, okay. So an existing well is in this field, and so the well has to be repaired, it's, it's well beyond its useful life. And so the, the landowner has the option to repair it or relocate it. And so, it's gonna cost roughly the same amount of money, a little bit more obviously to relocate because you have to re-pipe. But the preference is to relocate it here. And he's been in contact, and it's essentially, we're waiting on basically this board and this process. Once this is approved, then the efforts to, to introduce a new well supplying the...
I mean, at, at the very least, the approval would have to be contingent upon relocating the wells in the spot indicated on the plans.
Absolutely, I think that's very reasonable.
So if you, if you have to shift them, you know, 50 feet either way, 100 feet either way, you gotta come back to the board.
I think that's reasonable.
And the, I mean, the, the comment that people are just renting and can just go somewhere else, unfortunately, that's not, that's not a very valid comment.
Yeah.
They, to my knowledge, the people own mobile homes and they rent the spot.
Excuse me, exactly.
If you can find another place in eastern Massachusetts to locate a mobile home in a mobile home park that isn't already filled up, that's a surprise to me. I don't think they're out there.
Okay.
So they are, unless they abandon the home, they're pretty much stuck there. They can't move them anywhere. Just a comment. And, and like I said, the, the comment that they can just go ahead and move it somewhere else, that, that's not a valid, that's not a valid response.
If that's how it came across, I would try that.
I mean, I would be glad if you guys could find a place to locate all the homes along that property line, along that edge of your, your solar array, and then commit to pay the cost to move the homes in that new location. I mean, that's one thing, but you, we're not even, we're not even there. I, I do have some, I don't have any financial interest there, but I do have some sympathy for somebody just looking out over a field of, of solar panels that are actually facing in their direction. It's gonna be quite a visual impact to the people that are there. My opinion. The setbacks, I, I don't even want to talk about the setbacks yet, I think the whole board, I'm gonna make an assumption on the whole board, that we're not ready to just say, "Yes, the setbacks are okay." I think it's gonna require some, some further discussion between members of the board and what to do in the future. When I'm looking, you know, I'm, I'm always one that's kind of looking at whose land is gonna get flooded if there's a problem with the, with the ponds that are proposed out there. I can't speak to that part of the property, but I think the rest, the front part, I'm not so sure that you can count on any infiltration on the ponds, if there were ponds in the front part of the, the first two sections. This back section, I have no knowledge of that. Have there been any percolation tests or test pits done in the area of those ponds to determine if they actually will percolate any water? And is there any seasonal high groundwater level back there that would just make them year-round ponds? We have one project in town that's exactly like that.
I know.
And, and I, especially looking for setback relief in infiltration ponds that may or may not infiltrate. Two of them in particular will go on to other, other people's properties, not an adjacent wetland. Those to me are critical. And if you, again, this is just my personal opinion, if you're looking for setbacks in those areas, I'm gonna want to make darn sure that those ponds are gonna be empty in normal circumstances and that they will percolate groundwater all through the spring. It's just created too many problems in other sections of town in terrain very similar to this.
Yes, sir.
So I, I want to see more, more proof that the things are gonna work, period, with or without the 150-foot setback. Again, that's just my personal opinion. The two that are, that will overflow into wetlands if they don't work very well, well, at least it's not really going to impact people's property, their backyards or other areas that they're planning on utilizing right now. So I for one, want to see more discussion and more, a more serious look at what, how those two ponds on the easterly side, yeah, are going to perform during the spring.
It's a great comment. Obviously, I hate keep going back to the other project, but when I came in for the other project, I made it very clear that I understood the, the worries in the town that have resulted from a poorly constructed project and ultimately what was a poorly designed project. Beyond that, we understood that, and stormwater has been the absolute priority. Stormwater control and view shed have been the two absolute priorities for me on both projects I brought before this board, the previous and now this one. As you get through, I know you just got the peer review letter today, but you'll find that we've done full soil testing with a, I can't remember the title of the person, but a certified soil scientist, maybe, something like that, who's done the full test pitting. Test pits in each of the locations where a, a stormwater feature is proposed. Those test pits were, were viewed by, I think, GF Engineering and the Board of Health. So we didn't just go out there and dig a hole in the middle of the night.
What, what kind of soils are back there on that, on that easterly property line?
I'd have to look at the report.
I, I'm, somebody's gonna have to put that right in front of my face to look at.
I will make sure I get you the full...
And if it's CND soils, I'm not convinced that those ponds are going to work well.
Yeah, I don't want to get over my skis on stormwater details. GF Engineering, our engineers at Beals and Thomas have done a great work, but I'll make sure I get into Victoria's hands the...
Somebody's gonna have to convince me of that.
Very good.
Okay, I'm not convinced right now, especially looking at, I mean, if there's a 150-foot setback along the northerly property line and the back property line, well, there's plenty of room to make those ponds three or four times as big if they need to be, so that it does, there's no discharge onto adjacent properties.
Fair enough. But yeah, we'll definitely get you that information. I'm depending on GAF to hold the bar as high as they possibly can on behalf of the town and we're meeting, so I'm gonna let GAF convince you.
I've gotta face people in town, if it doesn't work right.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and, and I've gotta say, you know, I, I let it go to peer review last time, and I was satisfied with that, and they did not work well at all. There were other construction problems related to that, but basically, that whole ridge in town, most of it comprised of CND soils that do not percolate. And if it doesn't percolate, it's gonna be wet all year long, if not, at least in the springtime, when is, when it is most important that there be enough storage in there so that they work without overflowing into adjacent properties.
Yes, sir.
That's, that's just, that's just me. But I'm, I've gotta be convinced of that. And, and part of that is gonna go into how I view the setbacks on those two, on those, on that easterly property line and along that section of this rear field on the northerly property line. That's, that's my comment on the, the storm drainage and the setbacks.
That's all you got?
Well, so far, so, so far.
So, so, you know, like, the thing I'd like to, you know, back to, you know, the comment of these people living over here, they require a septic system. What kind of condition is that current septic system in, okay? That may have, that may have to be moved at some point in the future, that these panels would potentially impact of putting in a, in a new system?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I can speak to that a little bit. Original landowner, Bill in the stupid place.
Okay.
Along with my father. And I've known his son for quite some number of years. Believe me, they have looked every place on that lot for a place that would percolate well enough to put a septic system on, and it's all down near the stream in the front. Everything up on the slopes, the, the water practically runs on the, not quite on the surface, but it goes down through the initial layer of soil, and then it hits what's underneath, which is tight as a drum and doesn't percolate anything.
Top of the cushion.
So the answer is, the only, the only other place they could even think about putting a septic system is out front next to the stream.
And just to point it out for the, for the board and anyone who's gonna watch the video, down in this area, the landowner owns another parcel here on which you'll, you'll see, you can see it driving on Main Street, it's the grass, yeah, your...
Do you know where the septic system is for the, the...
Oh, there's a big mound, yeah.
Yeah, it's still there, that's where it is.
Yep, yep.
Questions, comments, concerns?
I just have concerns on the eastern end of the project. It seems like we're really kinda, especially on this eastern boundary, seems like we're really getting close to some residences there. Was it 21 pushing, was it? That one of the people that came in, believe it, for the other project with the fence? The fencing was in that?
Is it A and R?
No, there was one, we had a, the fencing on this project up here, there were people, a couple of people came in looking, playing. Where was the other solar field? Oh, that's this one, yes. Another one going back over here, right?
If you guys don't mind, it's, it's...
This is a road, it's a road.
That's why it's a road.
Yeah, that's the...
Yeah, well, pushing lane, yep. Right, there was two going here. One, it was, it's actually gonna mean street address, okay? And the other one's at the end of Cushion Lane, there's two of them going, two other ones.
This is the very beginning of the property, that's the end of Cushing Lane.
This is, that's the one where you're going down, basically on the left-hand side, at the bottom of Cushing, when you hit the end of Cushing Lane, you run right into it, right? Then you got the one that had to go around, gentleman's property.
I don't know that one, I only know the one.
Which is.
You can see the.
The address, it's pretty, you can't really access the main street, but the address is actually Main Street, which is pretty much on that same corner.
Could be. Obviously not. And I know in the back over here, it's pretty wide.
Right, so this is where, so the other.
They have some challenges, it's going to come back.
That's behind there, and you got this, and that's where the other.
I mean, I can definitely understand on the northern, on the northern side with all this, with all this forestry and with putting the fences up, I can understand that. I just, I have, do have a few concerns about maybe some, at least, I don't know what's for screening on that east end.
So I can show you maybe a little, a little more detail right here, but I hear your piece, sir.
Is there something preventing you from, I mean, right now, you obviously have, you're going to be doing some, you've got tree clearing to do on this eastern.
Yes, sir.
What's stopping you from going muscling?
So that, that was kind of my point here. This area is all wet. That's where, see the wetland line right here? Basically, everything back here is wet and undevelopable. That's why we have these odd shapes. If I could build here and push that way, I would, but that's wet and that's wet. And we're relying on an existing, an existing crossing road, kind of almost an ancient road that's there. We're not doing any wetland impact, but there's a very thin strip of upwind for the road. But this is wet, this is wet, this is wet, this is wet, and then down here is spotty.
And like you said, I haven't had a chance to read through the peer review, but this road that goes around meets fire code.
Yes, sir.
For all, all the roads, correct?
Yes, there's a lot of, I mean, part of the challenge we have, the reason why the basins are so extreme, Cushing, it does have a very challenging bylaw from the fire department, which requires what we call ring roads. As a developer, I don't love it. Number one, because it introduces, it's very complicated, you can see with, especially with these tricky sites, but it introduces a ton of impervious surface. And so that's what is our kind of trigger from a post-construction standpoint when we try to balance post-construction stormwater with pre-construction. This site with the, and the previous site, like basically, we're, we're not doing any grading, right? The only grading is to create some of the basins or the stormwater features, but we're lucky in that we're not doing a lot of tree clearing and a lot of grading. There's about six acres or so to the east is the area we're clearing, but obviously on the two central, the central array and the Main Street array, there's not a single tree coming down, no grading, et cetera. So all the water is going to continue, continue to flow today. Very similarly, post-construction there, the conditions don't change much. But long way of saying, yes, meets fire code requirements.
Anybody else?
So it's pretty much a five megawatt, is that what it is?
It's five megawatts AC and it's about six megawatts DC.
Okay, so you're saying that reduces it by 20%, so you can be down to a four megawatt, is what you're saying?
About that. Would it help the board if I was able to communicate with, with these landowners and get some feedback from them to make sure that they're here?
To be honest with you, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but that doesn't really.
Yeah, at least on the storm drainage, it wouldn't make any difference to me. I've got to convince that not only the current residents, but future residents, I'm not going to have a problem with Ra from all the ponds.
Thank you.
All right, the board's asked their questions. Anybody out there? Please, if you could please just stand and for the record, let us know your name and address.
Yeah, my name's Kathy Barnes, I'm from 76 Robinson Road. I don't know where I am on the map.
Let me show you just to get your rent. Right in the middle.
Do you have the bigger map you had before? The bigger map?
The other side.
Yep.
So you're, you're not shown on this map, you're?
No, I am.
Oh, excuse me, right here.
So I'm right here. Do you know where my septic tank is? I asked you this last time.
It's on your property, so obviously I haven't had it located, but you've explained it to me that your septic tank is in this area right here, north of the field.
My septic tank is, so is this where you're asking for that?
Yes, ma'am, we're asking for that.
My septic tank is on that line. Okay, because of the wetland, I have to have cleanouts, manholes. That septic system costs me a ton of fortune for them. It runs all the way, literally down here to this one spot that it would park. There's nothing on this land parks, this is wetland. So, that's what I'm saying, so I'm right in the wa.
Is there a field there, or is it wooded?
It's all wooded, and then I have an opening that.
Oh, you do have an opening.
There's an opening where the, where the.
Septic field, yeah, okay.
Yep, and we literally just walked back there and, yeah, so I'm concerned that's going to get flooded out. I can't afford to add a septic system. It's literally right there at the, at the, at the law. The 600, so you, like, that's what you were saying, you have 700 feet, you were saying, from the property. Clearly not, my house might be 700 feet away, but I own all the way to this line.
Yes, ma'am.
We have 35 acres, me and my brother, my brother couldn't be here. And he was here every time he came, even when it was canceled. He got stuck in traffic up in his job. So he definitely wouldn't like to be here, but he is over here and he owns all this. So between us, we have 35 acres and we own this whole boundary right up to this project. But all I hear is what's reasonable. It's reasonable that we bought 35 acres of land and, you know, we knew that those were fields, there was a cemetery, that in the future, most likely, nothing would be developed. That's not reasonable when you buy a piece of land like that, that you reasonably can expect when that's not going to happen. So not only do we, would we have this, we're surrounded, we have an L. We're going to have solar farms all the way around our property. You know, we have it down here, now they're going to, it's basically an L. You know, it's, it's just not reasonable. That's not reasonable to a homeowner. It's not reasonable to the wildlife that's going to get misplaced. This coyote's down there. Every night I hear them, they're, they're down there. They're going to get relocated probably onto our property. That's going to change my life. You know what I'm saying? Because I now have to watch my dogs, the deer are ripping out there. Now they're going to have less place to go, so they're going to be more on our land. Which is fine, I don't mind them being on my land, but I'm just saying, you're, you make it sound like this is no big deal. This is a big deal, we live here. You know, you know, I, I have a huge septic system out there. My brother who built there, when he built there with those 20 acres, he promised the town he would preserve the land and never, ever develop the land because it's wetland. You know, when he got his perk, it was a slower perk, but they let it go because he promised he could only build one home on that land. So we lived up to our hands, you know what I mean? We didn't ask for special things. We're, I've been there for over 20 years now.
I, I don't mean to cut you off, and I totally understand and totally agree with everything you're saying. The one thing you have to take into consideration is, this is private property.
Oh, I understand that.
And whether they get the permission to put in a solar field or not, they can throw houses on there, they can develop.
Yeah, that's fine.
There's a lot that can be done on that property that will affect you all.
But the houses would have been, not been a solar farm, the houses would have had to have clear, there was a minimal acres, they had to have furnished. So even, that's fine, I'd rather see houses there than.
As long as.
Oh, yeah, I understand someone owns that land and they're trying to, it's all about a profit, but I, I, I think that there's just too many solar farms in that area.
Nope, I totally understand.
You know, and I do, I'm worried about my septic system.
We are too.
It's, it's, it's been there for a while and like, we have like, the town said they'd never put another one in, it was like so long that it had to have a cleanout station, which was huge. You know, I had to have special plants, designs.
Can you tell me what page the retention ponds are on?
C 2.1, specific field. C 2.1, 2.2, 2.3.
Thank you. And so there was parks already that are on that land, we already had it parked.
I, I didn't say we had it parked.
Oh.
We had the soil samples done and we had the stormwater design.
Oh.
Such that it meets that standard. The only basin? You guys have it? That's in the next page. If the.
So you have one here, right?
Yes.
And this, and this is the middle one. Is there another one for this pond? Is this it? See, just trying to get an idea of where they're locating that.
There's no stormwater features.
One here, one here.
There's no stormwater features to the north, there's no grading to the north, simply the fence because of that wetland line. The stormwater features, this, this land.
Yep.
The water will flow this way, not, will flow this way, so here's the feature.
So there's, so this one and this one, both on the west side, is that where this?
Yes, sir.
West side of the ridge.
Yeah.
It's down right now, so that's why.
Yep.
Yeah, so I see where it's coming from, that if the water does go this way, it's going to hit all of them, or if it does go that way.
Yeah, it's, I'm more on the, the back piece. That, that whole, that whole field just kind of drains all the way down to the stream.
If you guys, sorry to interrupt, there's, this is the, this is the intermittent stream that runs here, that all the water tends to move toward Main Street, but hits that stream and never gets to Main Street. So I'm sure at some point that this was dug out when Main Street was built 100 years ago. All the water continues to go this way, so there's no stormwater features north. We have this swale that'll carry any excess water that might want to push north back down into this basin, and we have a similar construction. This is the western road. We have a similar construction on the eastern field here with everything moving this way. Nothing up here, nothing close to the septic system for Mr. Burns.
Could, could we get that septic system spotted on that, on that plan?
If, if I have permission.
As long as, the landowner's got to let you on the property to locate it.
We exchanged contact information prior to the meeting, so I can reach it.
Yeah, I had that once, well.
It would clarify things a little bit for us.
Yeah.
That stream, that the one closest to, is, that's not an annual stream, that's just, is this?
That, I, I know I was talking a lot in the beginning, but.
I know you went back and forth with conservation regarding, is it?
Conservation Commission via their, what's called a request for determination, issued the determination that the stream is, I want to say this right, intermittent, not perennial.
That's the one that's closest to Main Street?
Runs all the way up to Quaker Lane.
Correct.
And it runs down past Leonard.
They, they made that determination?
Yes.
The conservation's been on this site, sidewalks for the EnRat, sidewalks for the RDA and sidewalks for the NOS and the TAF.
Forester, if they made that determination.
All peer review, all peer review.
That's the driveway right there.
That's this one.
He's right here.
That's for, that's for this.
That's for this one, and this one, and then this is Cushing right here. So then there's one here and one here.
Right.
And then this one, these are the three from that other side. And the issue that we have with the water is right here. Gentlemen, anything else? So next, we vote or we don't vote, or what do we do?
That's up to the board, of course, but the peer review, there's still open comments. And also, if the board isn't comfortable, I know Mr. Ellis made a comment not being comfortable voting on the setbacks tonight. If you want to think about it till the next meeting while we finalize some other comments.
Thank you. What I'm going to say, and I think the board is behind me on this, and I, and when you guys came in on your preliminary, I thought I tried to make it as clear as possible. In my opinion, and please, gentlemen, interject if I'm not speaking for everybody, my opinion is those setbacks are too much. Again, we have people in town that have come to me and they really want me to hold the line. And I, and I'm not even really with them. Again, I'm going to go back to the setting of precedence. Because this is the second one. And the main reason why we, one of the main reasons why we revamped the solar bylaw was because of the setbacks. I'm not going to give you grief, which I guess in an illegal way I really can, being 300 feet off Clem's Way. I will say that I don't like the fact that there's no screening from those trailers, from all those homes. When they wake up, they're going to look at a solar field that's staring straight at them. I don't like that fact. I appreciate you wanting to put the, the stockade fence in the back, but that's really not going to help anybody, nobody's going to see that. I agree with Mr. Ellis that we definitely need to see as much proof as possible regarding stormwater. I mean, I'm not questioning your engineers, I'm not questioning GF. I haven't read through the entire peer review. As somebody who's gone through a stormwater bylaw and, and had one built, I know it's very, very detailed. But again, to make Mr. Ellis and the rest of the board happy, we definitely need what soils they are, what the percolation rates are. We need definitely more information regarding those potential ponds. I just do not think that this board is ready to give up that much of the setback.
It's fair.
If you came to me with some kind of major hardship with residents and this and that, I'd take some of that into consideration, but the only thing that you want is more panels.
Correct.
Unfortunately, that doesn't faze this board, whether it's a five megawatt or a four megawatt or whatever, that doesn't faze us. I understand you want to make as much money as possible, and I don't, I totally understand that. And you're, and you're better off going to here and coming back because you just don't know what we're going to say when you, when you come in front of us. So that's what you did, you just went to the outer limits and said, this is what we want. And then you're going to kind of creep back. I can't give you the outer limits right now, we can't, it's just way too much. I'm going to, and I, I thought I made it clear and I'm going to try to make it as clear as I can. When it comes to the setbacks, you're going to get very little, what's the word I'm looking for?
Sympathy.
From us.
I appreciate the clarity. One clarification, we did communicate that setbacks, we have pulled back from the iteration that I provided you guys at the informal review. Didn't pull back as far as you guys wanted. I tried to find the balance between what I thought I could defend and what I can't, and I hear what you guys are saying very clearly. So I appreciate that. I can add screening and improve your concerns with the residents along Clem's Way. I can, I can do a couple of things, but my instinct is to extend the stockade fence in place of the typical security fence so that we have a solid screen around the array. And then we can obviously touch up what is a pretty strong visual image of a big wooden fence with some plantings and whatnot where we have space. It's a very space-constrained site, that's, that's where a lot of this, this heartache is coming from. So I hear you on screening the Clem's, or the residents along Clem's. I hear you on the setbacks, or my request to setback. I hear you, sir, on the stormwater. I would like to locate that, um, feature that's off property, just so we all have.
If you could just let us know on the map where her septic system exactly falls and how far away it is, it would definitely help us.
My, my instinct is simply we'll dig up the plans and we'll plot. We'll plot it, if we can't find the plans.
I have the plans.
If we can't.
The border health should have.
Border health has.
It shouldn't be a big deal to do that.
Yep, it should, not at all. And we talked about this in conscom, and apologies for not locating it, but it was off property, we're not doing any grading up there, so I've, you know, we talked about it with the engineers, we said stay away from that area, we don't want anything close. So I'm happy to clarify it. Those are the items that I can come back with.
Well, I mean, you've heard our concerns.
Yeah.
We'll continue this meeting. One thing I will ask, um, they don't have to be certified, but I'd like you to reach out to all the residents on the original list. A regular mailed letter would be sufficient. Like I said, I've seen this room full, whether it's conservation or the earlier meetings, and to just have one person here, nobody on Zoom, means that nobody knew that this meeting was taking place.
They didn't know.
Yeah, so I would appreciate if you sent out a letter, uh, just letting everybody know what date we're postponing this to.
Continuing it.
Continuing to, thank you.
Yes, sir.
My next question is, how much time are you gonna need? And give yourself plenty, 'cause that date's gonna be on the letter. How much time are you gonna need to come back with whatever changes you're gonna make?
I don't wanna answer right now, I know I have to. I said I don't wanna answer. I didn't say I wasn't. So we're every other?
We're every other right now, yes.
Well, so first and third, sorry, first and third, so it'd be the 16th, and then we wouldn't meet again until the 6th.
Any special, um, plans for November, December for the, you know? What I'm thinking about is if there are two more meetings, I just, do you guys have any special plans for the 20th, or canceling the 20th of November? Due to, it's kinda getting close, actually Thanksgiving's late this year, so there'll be a meeting on the 20th and the 6th of November?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Anything?
20th?
Just to make sure.
All right, why don't we? Why don't we say we'll continue this to the 20th?
November 20th?
Just because the next question would be, I imagine the board, have you guys joined a site walk yet for this property?
We have not.
No.
Okay, so we probably wanna schedule a site walk as well. Question?
We can.
The main reason is if we're, I don't want the site walk to be too close to the date we pick, so that if we, if we get any feedback at the site walk, I don't wanna show up two days later and not have incorporated it. So that's why I'm thinking delay to the 20th, let's get the site walk scheduled in October, so that we can have a time period to make any revisions we might need. It gives me time to clean up the two or three technical items that GAF engineering is asking for, so I can do that for the boards. So we can say November 20.
So. Okay.
You're not gonna build anything this year anyway, so.
No.
Hopefully not.
No.
And we don't need another project that rips open the forest at the end of the year.
Only build the two arrays in the middle.
My biggest issue is, again, I asked them to send out letters to the abutters. I don't wanna set it for the 20th and they're not gonna have enough time, and then we're gonna have to postpone, then they're gonna send more letters, and I just want people to know when the meeting date is. If they think they can get all this done in 30 days, oh, it's a little over.
It's more than that, that's right.
Yeah, it's a little over 30.
It's a lot of days, that's right. My instinct was the 6th.
But now you're going about a month and a half.
But if we wanna do a site walk, I wanna give you guys time.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the 20th gives us the ability to get a lot of the responses from the information tonight to the board, have the site walk, and then.
Make whatever change.
Peer review, and yeah, so that's our rationale for that.
I'll entertain a motion to postpone.
Continue.
Continue, thank you. This hearing till November 20th.
I will send you a public hearing to November 20th?
I have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now.
All right, Victoria, I just have a question. Does that prevent us from having a discussion between us at interim meetings? Or does that have to be open to public?
Yes, you can't discuss the hearing in the in-between meetings.
I mean, the reason I say that is, I think we need to further continue the talks about the setbacks. That's all. I, maybe if you don't feel it's necessary, then that's fine, we can just hold it till the 20th and make our decisions then.
I would say if you wanna talk about setbacks in a general sense.
Yes, that was.
Of what we'd be willing to.
We don't have to be talking about.
Okay, okay, okay.
We can just talk about the sole setbacks in a general.
Correct.
Outside of.
I wouldn't mention project-specific or anything like that, because that would constitute.
We'll put that on the next meeting.
Okay, yeah, let's do that.
We'll put that on the next meeting to where we discuss general setbacks.
Yeah, okay, great.
Um, as far as, I'd like to personally do a site walk as early as possible to give you as much time as possible. How does the board feel about October 18th? How do you feel about October 18th? Saturday, October 18th.
Oops.
Are we opposed to doing before that? We're supposed to have a gorgeous Saturday. We're doing this Saturday. If you're good weather, you know what I mean, I hate to be doing it in rain, but.
This Saturday might be a little close, and next Saturday I'm unavailable. That's why I went right to the 18th.
I'm unavailable on the 11th as well, so that's convenient. I mean, there's nothing I need to do, right? We can get there on Saturday if you're available, like, there's not.
This Saturday or the 18th?
Either.
Oh.
But to the gentleman's point, this Saturday is closer than.
I'm open, what do you guys? You wanna do this Saturday as in two days from now?
This Saturday? No, I can't do it then.
Okay, 18th.
18th.
18th for the.
18th for the site walk.
That would give you enough time, you think?
There's something we need to do, right, per se.
We're just gonna walk around, and we're gonna point things out, you're gonna point things out, we're gonna see the site, and.
Can't do much discussion anyways, I think we will, we'll, I'll likely provide, Victoria, with some supplemental information just that you guys already have, but just I'll bubble it to the top, specifically the, um, soil testing reports. So you can see the hundred pages of the reporting that we did on all the different test pits.
Like I said, when the abutters come and tell me that they've got water running all over their property that they never had before, I'm still in town. But they know where I live.
I'm hopeful and stubborn, but not that stubborn. That's why I'm not asking for any stormwater relief, especially in this town, so I understand.
Um, 8:00 AM, is that what we usually have done? Is 8:00 too early or?
Works for me.
Works for me, too.
Yeah. 8:00 AM is fine.
I'm up at 6:00.
All right.
Okay, we, uh, we made motion, we've continued, you've got, uh, your bullet points. We're gonna send this on the evening, and you're gonna send out letters, key letters, letting them know about November 20th.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next, next on the agenda, discussions. Continued discussions on amending the Business Village District. Victoria, you wanna lead this one off?
Yes. I don't know what, I've been here twice, but.
Okay, any?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is it possible to get a full-size plan at the meeting that shows the water and the sewer system? I looked at the thing on my computer.
Yes.
But I've gotta be honest with you, I had, it's too small, and then when I try to blow it up, I can't seem to move the view around.
Yeah.
So it really.
You're not the only one.
I meant to, I meant to print it, I'm sorry about that. I can share it on the screen as well, but, um.
You're talking about the old-school person who used to have a light table, and he'd put one plan on top of another, and then it was easy to figure out what went where and what areas had water potential and what areas had storage potential when they came together.
Did, so, since you brought that up, did you wanna look at that first? About the water and sewer and the location?
Whatever you want, go for it.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, as long as there's a way to, you have to look at both of them. And, you know, obviously where, to me, where water and sewer is available, that's like a prime place to go look at higher-density commercial, higher-density residential, you know, multifamily, all of that stuff. But without, the sewer is so tough in this town. You know, without the ability to provide storage, high-density development just isn't an option.
I'm gonna argue that.
And there are other DEP regulations that put even more constraints on higher-density developments on one piece of property. Over 10,000 gallons a day, you've gotta put in a storage treatment plant. That's essentially the way the regulations are written. So even a high-density, and that's gonna make virtually everything cost-prohibitive.
So.
It used to be 15, now it's 10.
Comes down to that, but even water and sewer, what is the capacity of our sewer system that we have now?
That's, I mean, that's another issue, but at least there are, there usually are ways to improve capacity if necessary, you know, that a developer can look at. But if you don't have the soil, you don't have a project. And even like three, three-bedroom houses is close to 1,000 gallons a day. So that's 30, that's 30 houses. That's it, all you can, if you have to put in a common treatment plant, you're stuck to about 30 houses on that site.
But what I was getting at though is the capacity of our current sewer system, we talked about the business district, we talked about water and sewer, the actual capacity of how much we can expand with the site, with the pipes that we have in the ground. And to your point.
I'm not discounting that, but decades ago, when I was a practicing engineer, we ran a four-some, a mile and a half from the White's Family Restaurant in Westport to the City of Fall River to store that place with city sewer. They've gone through like three septic systems in 10 or 12 years. But my point is that I can't tell you that there's a way to do it. But if somebody has got a piece of property and they have the potential, they'll, and there's a possibility, they'll figure out a way.
I got you, but again, I think part of this is even working with the current infrastructure we have and the property sizes that we have here in town, okay, is just to wanna know what the, how much capacity we get to expand on what we have.
I probably saw you nothing.
Um, so I'm not sure if this is directly answering your question, it sounds like you're asking about like maybe the age of the, the.
The size, the volume?
Yeah.
We got eight-inch mains, we got six-inch mains, we got whatever we've been kicking around.
I don't have the details on that specifically, but as far as capacity to expand for either New Bedford or Fairhaven to take the capacity to process their systems, there is room there, and I think at this point, I don't think we should be worried too much about that capacity, 'cause if it needs to change or be upgraded, and we need to try to secure funding to do that, we need to show that we're zoned for, you know, increased flow, right? We need to show that development is possible. Otherwise, it's a really tough sell to secure funding.
And, and if it's a developer, then it's just his cost to upgrade the system so that it's got enough capacity.
Yeah.
You know?
So let's just put sewer aside for now. And like Victoria said, even if we go and zone it that way, I always had the idea, I never, I never went at this with the thought of having, and it's possible, maybe in the future, what's the word you just used? A lot of, 30 houses.
One thing she's mentioned before is cottage house type of development.
Oh, yeah.
But, and if you don't, for one thing, any kind of housing, it's gotta be, a builder has to be able to make more money on cottage housing than what's being built right now. So he's gotta have smaller lots, he's gotta have the ability to make money on that acre, you know, and if, or acre and a half. If he can make X number of dollars on an acre and a half zoning-sized lot, then he's gotta be able to make more with cottage-type of development, or it's not gonna happen. You know, I mean, that's. That's unfortunately, fortunately or unfortunately, that's the economics of the situation that you have to, you have to deal with. There's gotta be a way to make, I mean, why would you build 10 houses and make the same money that you could make if you could only build three?
Okay, I wanna interrupt you.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
We need clarification, I need clarification. So we have continued discussion on amending the Business Village District. We've had discussions about making Main Street commercial property so people can put commercial buildings on Main Street. That's what we've been discussing is continuing, so I'm assuming we're continuing the Business Village District to make, uh, Leonard, expansion to Leonard or Lake, as far as Lake. Now, when discussing Business Village District, I take it as businesses. I don't take it as residential. I take it as businesses, whether it's a hair salon, a liquor store, a t-shirt shop, whatever it is, a business that wants to continue down Main Street, they can put a small business, maybe two apartments above, that's what I envision for this town. I do not know if sewage is necessary. I don't know how much, I don't know what the requirements are for a hair salon, a t-shirt shop, a liquor store, whatever the store may be, as far as putting a septic, which we don't have, sewage going down Main Street. So the way I'm picturing this in my head is extending the Business Village District to Lake Street for business. I'm not taking sewage into consideration, I'm not taking residential into consideration, I'm just going with commercial. The next discussion we're gonna have is amending the Resident Aid District, which we've had discussions on, we have 60,000 squiff lots in this town. There are areas, which Victoria will bring up a map in a second, 'cause she and I were looking at it earlier today, there are pockets which you can see in this town, neighborhoods, that are not 60,000 square feet. And if there's any land available in those pockets of hypothetically 15,000 square feet, 20,000 square feet, whatever the square footage is of those lots, I think we should, I guess we don't wanna say spot zone, but they should have different zoning in those areas, those neighborhoods. So with that being said, just so, I'm not confused, and anybody watching this video is not confused, discussion on amending the Business Village District means. is not confused, discussion on amending the Business Village District means continuing Main Street. Right now, that's where we're going to go with this because then we can always go Middle Road, but right now, we want to continue Main Street to Lake Street and make it by right, somebody can open up a business. Now, once that person or developer comes in and wants to open up a business, their issue to decide whether or not they can do it with a septic or they need sewage. That's not what we're going to discuss right now because we know this town does not have the money to extend the sewage. And if it's in a sewage district area that is, does have sewage, then great, let that developer worry about that. But we, like Victoria said, before we can look or get any funding from the state, it has to be zoned that way. So let's discuss that one first so we get everybody that's watching this on the same page. Let's discuss extending the Business Village District all the way to Lake Street. So if somebody wants to open up a business, like we have a lot of them there now, it's by right and not by special permit.
I'm sorry, you said the Lake Street?
The Lake.
Okay.
Yes. Because originally, I was going to go to Leonard, but then I was kind of informed that there's probably more businesses between Leonard and Lake than there are between here and Leonard. So instead of stopping at Leonard, let's just go to Lake.
Yeah.
Because there's a lot of businesses there now. Again, I just think if somebody wants to open up...again, I'm just throwing things out there, t-shirt shop, dog grooming, whatever it is, and then they can throw two apartments above and get some rent from that, or live there themselves, open up a garage or whatnot, I think it should be by right and not by special permit. And I think that's what we should discuss and that's what we should try to get. And then, then we can look at Middle Road, that's another busy road to look at. But let's start with that discussion first. Does anybody have anything they'd like to have Victoria put on the article when we come this spring? What are your concerns regarding that? Your thoughts about that, before we move on to residence?
Like, were you thinking about like 300 feet back from the road, 100 feet back from, you know, Main Street, 200 feet back from Main Street? Any property that quite has the potential to have frontage on Main Street?
The zoning map?
Yeah. So I...we have a zoning map and we do have...
There's just got to be lines on the zoning map, that's all.
Well, we have it zoned right now to where in the Business Village District, we can go back...so if it's 100 feet or 300?
I think it's 300.
300 feet, okay. Well, looking at the map, why? Why do we do 300 feet? If it's got frontage on Main Street and it's commercial district and the lot goes back 1,000 feet...
And that's why I asked the question.
I say, in my opinion, get rid of the 300 feet. If you're zoned, again, it'll...see, you look at the map, everything that's red is where they can build. But if you look at certain lots, there's red, but it goes...and again, I don't know what's on those lots, I'm just going by emptiness here. I'm just throwing things up against the wall right now. But if you look, yes, perfect, Victoria, I'm going to get up, we're going to get by here, just so I can kind of make a point here.
You're getting away from my point.
All right. So if we're...let's just say here, this lot, which goes way back here, I don't know what's on that lot, but why should they stop there? Why should it only stop to the 300 feet? Why can't that entire lot be zoned commercial? Why is...I'm just wondering, it was put there, what's the reasoning for it?
Well, I mean, generally, it's just a matter of having a number, you know, if you want everything that fronts on...
Well, yeah, well, yeah, let's look at...
So basically, I think the number was pertaining to...
Look at this lot.
The fact that the side streets.
I don't know, I don't know what's on this lot. It could be all white, it could be...I don't know what's on that lot. But if it's zoned commercial to here, why couldn't the whole thing be zoned?
So...
That's Rose Lawn right there. Roseland Nursery?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So let's just say hypothetically, the owners of Roseland wanted to sell, and then the developer wanted to come in and say, hey, this is a commercial piece of property. And if they wanted to blow in a road and build things back, again, there's a lot of variables there. I'm just throwing a lot out there. Why do we have to have it towards only 300 feet?
Only because, the only thing that comes with that is, again, you get side roads, okay, so where's that 300 feet? We just crotch blunt the whole center of town.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's the alternative, is you just say, well, the rest of the town is, or this whole area. You have to define a line on the zoning map. You could go back to the river and say it can all be...
Yes.
It can all be commercial.
So what we could do is, you know...
Doesn't have to be tight, a piece of property, that's all, that's what that 300...
Yeah, you're not supposed to spot zone.
I know, I'm with you when it comes to the fact, okay, why can't you go back, say you've got an extra 200 feet behind you on Main Street, if that's what you're trying to define as the business district, okay? But now, as soon as you turn down Garfield Street, you turn down Pembroke, okay? So if you just keep going back, where does it start? There's a goal, we can...that's part of the reason why I have that line.
So you just follow what you're saying.
Yeah, so...
You've got to have some kind of defined line on a zoning map, that's all.
I'm following you, you actually brought that up today.
Correct.
You were trying to get that through my thick skull earlier today, yeah.
Sorry, yeah. But essentially, so whether 300 feet or whatever the number the board wants to see, you will need to address what we call split-zoned lots, which is exactly what Chair Francois was talking about, is, you know, having that larger parcel, but only a portion of it is zoned, you know, business village. So you...either way, you are going to want something that takes away that ambiguity. So you could either have it this way and say, I've seen some, I think there might even be one in the packet I gave you, some bylaws will say, oh, you can go back an additional X amount of feet, some will say you can use your whole parcel for whatever zone that it lies in. So that's something the board should think about as we move forward with that.
So I think that's the answer to your question, Mark. You know, the first...I'm not stuck on any 300 feet, but the first 300 feet is the commercial zoning. If you own additional land in a residential zone, what she's saying is you can address that in the zoning bylaw to allow a commercial use back on the whole lot, back on another 300 feet, however you want it to be.
I'd like to be able to get that defined to where, again, if that happens to be Roseland and it's a big piece of property, and let's just say hypothetically, it's all upland, we would take the butters into consideration, there would be a lot more of a process.
I hate that. That puts that...that does put the board on the spot to pit the butters against the developer as the decider. And, you know, you can do that, I don't know how many...it's not, to me, that's not a pleasant process, but, you know, if that's what you've got to go through, that's what you've got to go through to get more commercial, you know, property in town.
So what I need clarity on, what is the difference between commercially-zoned property and business-zoned property?
However the zoning bylaw reads, period.
Period, okay. Because, you know, commercial to me allows a certain amount of manufacturing, not just putting in a t-shirt shop or a bop shop, or any other type of...
It's all in how it's written in the zoning bylaw.
That's just how we're going to define that, that's, you know, one minute we're calling it the business district and then we're calling it commercial property, what is...
Like what Mark was saying too, about having the small business on the...near the street and having a couple dwelling units up above. That has to be written in the zoning that you can do that, that's all.
Yes, and that's exactly what I'm talking about, that's what she's taking notes on, and that's what I want to do. And in my opinion, it makes sense, if somebody wants to open up a small business and have apartments above it, I mean...
They have it already.
You go to the Bourne Rotary, they're putting up all kinds of storefronts with apartments above it, it's like, it's everywhere. And it should be by right, it shouldn't be a special permit, shouldn't be somebody having to go through all kinds of red tape for it, it should be, come in, this is what I want to do, go for it.
We already have it right here in town. We got the corner lot over here...
So it's not, it's by right right now, the way it's set up?
It's not, it's already, it's an existing condition, right? So I don't just say you want to do by right because things have changed, but we already have that condition, we get right there on the corner of Slocum and Main, that building right there, we got a restaurant, we got a barroom, and we got apartments overhead. You go right down the street over here...
If I wanted to go down Main Street and buy a piece of property...
I'm not saying it's not there, but that's, but I'm just saying it should be a big deal because we already have...what I was getting at is, we already have those situations, you've got the package store, you've got the apartment above, which was Mary's Package Store upstairs, you've got apartments above that one. So it's, you've got the captain's place, you've got an apartment above the restaurant. It's not...
Like we don't have.
Not like we don't have it.
I understand.
It's the point I'm trying to get at.
I hear you, and I want to make it to where...
Yes.
We can have more of that, without any issue.
Those are grandfathered, so if somebody else wanted to do that today, they could not.
Correct.
Right now, right, yeah, you would have to come in for a special permit to do so. And I get it, it's just there, but I'm just trying to make the point, it's like, it's not totally new, other than we don't have it by right right now.
Right, right, right.
Understood.
You know, people would say it, we...
But I do agree with you, sorry to cut you off, I do agree with you though, that I think that it should be by right.
Yeah, yeah. I don't think you should have to go through it. They already, everything that everybody does has to be, there's so much involved in it already, so that...
Yeah.
I'm not saying that you should be able to do it on every single piece of property, but I mean, if you're zoned for it, then you should be by right.
And you have set, I mean, I'm not saying it's changed setbacks, I'm not trying to encroach on neighbors, but if you have the setbacks and you have a piece of land, and I don't know what the septic rules are, but if you have enough property, impermeable property in the back to put in a septic system that allows for two apartments and a small business, it should be by right. We should make it as easy as possible for somebody to come into this town, put in a small business, and live above it or rent above it, and brings more income into the town. I'm just, that's what I think, one of the main things we should do. And again, we'll never have Route 6 in Fairhaven or Dartmouth, we will never have that. Want the town to know that's not what we're looking at. We're just looking to small businesses, small mom-and-pop businesses, small apartment buildings, and then, once we get into the resident part of it, I have opinions on that as well, but we should definitely make it easier. And then, once we zone that way, we can start looking for state grants to help us with sewage to make it even better. But right now, I just think, whatever they can get away with what we have, we should make it as easy as possible.
So, I know I gave you guys a lot of information, and I...it's all in the yellow folder so you guys can review it and make notes, but I made a quick little, quick little graphic just to share, and I wanted to highlight some of the differences. I'll run through it quickly, from what our existing district is and what I have done some research on some other surrounding communities and what they're, what's seen in theirs. So right now, we allow all residential uses, and everything that's allowed in the Residence A District is allowed in the Business Village District. We do allow by right up to 3,000 square feet, and then anything greater than that needs a special permit, and there are various uses allowed, retail office, bank, that sort of thing. In other communities, and we're talking a lot about having business and residences above, which is called mixed use, for those that aren't familiar, so other communities have either, you know, they require the entire first ground floor to be commercial, or they'll have like a percentage to sort of encourage that. You know, what we're talking about when we're talking about our Village Center or the core of the town, right? You want to encourage, you know, a walkable area, you want businesses allowed so people can stop in and shop, right? So this is one of the ways we can help achieve that. Additionally, some even have, if they do have, they do allow on the first floor, they'll require in the rear of the building, so that way the commercial is kind of front and center. So another thing the board should be looking at when you're reviewing all this information is the dimensional standards, and such as like the lot size, setbacks, lot coverage, and especially the height, to see what...
There's usually parking requirements in there too.
Correct, yep, so I have that on here as well. So actually, we're kind of opposite of what promotes kind of that sense of like placemaking and in a walkable area. So in our bylaw, it says that no parking is allowed in the side or rear yards. So obviously, that means the parking has to be in the front, which means the building is further set back, so it's not as easily accessible to people walking on the street. So if you're trying to create kind of a cohesive area, it's better to have it in, have the building closer to the front, closer to the street, and the parking in the rear. So that's consistent with what I've seen in the other bylaws I've been reviewing. And last day, I know we've talked a lot about like water-sewer connections and the requirement for that. You know, some towns require the tie-in if the street already has it, or if it's within a certain distance that they can kind of like economically afford the tie-in. But I haven't seen any that requires it, you know, as far as, if, like, for example, we don't have a lot of sewer, right? So if there was no sewer there, and saying it's required, you're kind of eliminating that as an option to build on. So that's a consideration too, and I think a developer wouldn't build on what's not feasible for them.
Well, they should have the...if somebody's going to spend all that money, if they can develop storage somehow, that the board of health is satisfied, they should be able to.
Exactly.
You know, whether it's onsite or offsite.
Correct.
It's just when it comes to higher-density things, it gets more difficult to do with onsite systems, that's all.
Yeah.
Or, and, you know, high-density residential, the grocery store, not grocery stores, but restaurants are tough for storage.
Yeah.
They're very, they're very high users there.
Right.
And actually, to some degree, grocery stores are too, but not like Gaggens down there, you know, which is just a little convenience store plus, I guess.
Yeah.
So that was my quick little spiel on that, just so you guys can kind of...
But, you know, what do we limit it to? Something, you know, footprint-wise, you know? I'm looking at that at 3,000 square feet, but that could be, that, just let me finish, that 3,000 square feet could mean 1,500 square feet, times two, you've got a second floor, you get 3,000 square feet. So, do we limit it to the footprint of the building? Because at some point, do we just, well, without, just by right, somebody can come in and put a strip mall in, okay? And just say, yeah, this is what we're going to do. At some point, we need to have some oversight on what's going, because we've got traffic patterns to worry about, we've got a lot of things to worry about when it gets, if the building starts coming too big, and parking.
Probably don't have a problem with that in this town, but that's...
Yeah, if I could just...
Parking is always a huge thing. Usually, if somebody got shut down in time because they didn't have the...
Usually, that's always handled in the wording of the zoning bylaw.
My point.
The building coverage, you know, if it's multi-floor, you know, that can be part of the coverage requirement too. So it can only cover so much of the lot with building. And then, with parking requirements, that further puts another constraint on it. Parking a lot of times is the biggest user of land.
Yes.
But I kind of agree with what Victoria said on this little chart that she has here, is I would prefer to see the storefront closer to the road, and if they're required to have X amount of parking spots, if they built a 10-foot road that goes behind and they have room to put parking spots in the back, if that's not allowed now, I think it should be.
Yeah.
Parking is parking. That doesn't make any sense to me.
Parking is parking. If it's in the back or the side, on top of the roof, I don't care where it is, parking is parking. Now, I would prefer them being able to put it in the back and bring the storefront closer, it doesn't have to be in the front.
But would you require it to be in the back? Or would you say...
I would say whatever works for the broader...
Yeah, yeah.
Most retailers want the parking in the front. You drive by the front of a building and you see a full parking lot and nothing out in the back.
If I drive by a restaurant, I see everybody buying dollar fruit, it's like, hey, gee, I'm driving.
But there are a lot of other uses other than retail, you know, that can deal with parking in the back.
One thing I just wanted to add, because I know Steve had brought up traffic and there's other things we'd have to look at, the use being by right does not mean the board won't see it, just as a point of clarification. If they are large enough to trigger our site plan review by law, then they would have to come in front of the board for that, so we would look at traffic, we would, you know, they would be looking at stormwater, you know, under Concom and things like that. So it doesn't mean that those things won't get reviewed, make sure it's safe and site circulation, it just means that the use can't be denied.
And that's another thing that needs to be in the bylaw. You need to really sit down and say, how big of something do you think we should have until it triggers site plan review?
I think, I don't think it should be very big. It should have site... I, I think, I don't think it should be very big, I, it, it should have site plan review. If it's a commercial building.
That should trigger it.
That should trigger it, oh, just about right there, it's a commercial building.
Pretty much.
It should come in front of us, tell us what you wanna do, just give us the laydown, if you meet all standards, and it, and it's conforming to the bylaw and to the town, but we should all be, you know.
That should be an automatic.
It should be an automatic, yeah, in my opinion. I don't see a gazillion of them coming in to where we're gonna be inundated.
No, I don't, I, I, I don't either. It's, yeah, but again, it, you know, to, to, you know, when is that review, you know, what triggers that review? The size of it, or is it triggered anything that comes out?
Usually, like, our existing one, I don't know whether it's number of parking spaces, or size of building, because it, it got triggered for the little convenience store up here.
It's actually bold, so I just pulled it up, so this is what triggers it for site plan review. Any non-residential development that resulted in an increase in onsite parking of more than ten spaces, all new or modified non-residential development that increases gross, gross floor area more than three thousand square feet, or all new or modified non-residental, residential development that increases impervious surface coverage more than five thousand square feet.
That's, that's all small businesses, yeah, I mean, intent parking spaces, uh, you don't have to have too big of a building to trigger a requirement of ten parking spaces, so you need to think about that too. I'm just saying that, that, if the idea is to make it, to make it as easy as possible for the smaller businesses, then you've got to just carefully design, design what you have, consider a small business in the zoning bylaw, so people don't come in with triggered site plan reviews and things like that, that make it difficult to put it in.
I mean, what, do we have anything in there for restaurants particularly, as far as parking spaces go?
Like requirements?
Minimal parking spots, so they're, they're.
There's, there's gotta be some kind of law.
Yeah, I think there's a state.
There is, I know you got, the sushi place got basically, got, pretty much got shut down because he didn't have the parking spot.
Right.
Since it was there a long time, but.
So why did it even get, why was it even allowed to get open without zero parking spots?
I don't, that's something that, somebody didn't pick up on it, apparently, then somebody picked up on it, because it, what, what, the, the funny part about that lot, okay, it is not much bigger than the building, okay? What used to be the parking spot in the back, I used to spend a lot of time parked back there at one point in my life, okay? Was not, what was, belonged to, which actually belongs to Frank Knox. It belongs to that, to the, the old car lot right there, his place right there. That strip go, belongs to, to him over there.
So actually, um, spoiler for the next meeting, but we're actually gonna have an A and R on that, the adjacent parcel to that, so, um, somebody is gonna be purchasing the property from Mr. Knox, and they're, wanna do an A, A and R to carve out, um, a piece of another lot Mr. Knox owns for parking.
Okay.
So, just so, since we're on the topic.
Too bad we couldn't get the other lot that's on the.
There is, it's about, you know, it is.
That abandoned garage and all that would be excellent downtown parking. I know that they've discussed it.
That would be just excellent.
I know the select board has even discussed, uh, um, I guess there's, there's issues with the soils and whatnot, but I know that that's always been a consideration, to turn that into a parking lot. And I still think it's on some people's minds to try to get that as a parking lot, because a, a lot of times, the best option for contaminated soil is to cap it.
Put a cap, put a parking.
Put a parking lot over it.
You know what it is, you know what that's all about, cap and stuff?
We know a lot about that. Uh, but, uh, uh, that, I know that, again, I, I, I've just heard discussion on it, I'm sure it's on the, on the forefront of a lot of people's minds regarding that, and I know some people have reached out to the owners and whatnot, so I don't know the, the results of that, but yes, that would be perfect, to put, you know, as many parking lots, parts, spots as you could, it would benefit the restaurants in the area, it would benefit the, the storefronts a little bit further down, it would benefit a lot.
Absolutely.
It would benefit a lot, absolutely, but, again, I know that's been in the process, and might still be in the process of, 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 of discussion. Um, okay, just so we can keep moving or else we will keep BSing all night long. Um, anything else, I know she's been, uh, typing away over there, is there anything else you guys wanna add to what, this discussion? I know we've added more to this, uh, Victoria's accumulating all of this into something that she will put together later on. All right, uh, moving right along, discussion to, on amending the Residence, Residence A District. Um, Victoria and I are actually discussing today, so we have, we have, um, correct me if I say anything incorrect, we have sixty thousand square feet as a requirement for a lot right now. There's a lot of, uh, areas in this town, and Victoria's got them highlighted in purple, that are older and are less than sixty thousand square feet. Now, I haven't done all the research to see if there's any available lots in those clusters, but, again, hypothetically, if there's a cluster there, that the existing lots are fifteen thousand square feet, and if there happens to be an unbuilt fifteen thousand square foot lot within those other fifteen thousand square foot lots, they should be able to build, in my opinion, but nothing would stop them now from building it. Would they, are they able to?
Not necessarily.
They've done it already in time.
It can be, it can be difficult, I mean, if somebody bought two fifteen thousand square foot lots with the idea of separating the other one off, uh, there, it, it can be difficult. There's been some recent state zoning changes, that would make it easier, but I'm not sure that all the people that bought those lots know.
So you're telling me that the fif, if, if, if the name is fifteen thousand, this one's fifteen thousand, everybody around that lot is fifteen thousand, and that lot is fifteen thousand, they can build on it right now today?
I'd probably just separate a lot if it's.
It's not at sixty thousand square feet, they still should be able to build on it.
Well, they should be, but that's not how we're zoned, so they would have to go to ZBA.
All right, so they're, legally, they can't build on it.
What's the, I, you know, it's, it's the new state law on, on grandfathering.
Yeah, that's specifically.
That basically does, does away with combining of lots that are owned in common.
Right, so that's very specific to lots that were merged, so like, if there's other lots there that weren't merged, or, you know, whatever the case may be, there's some single lots out there, um, then that might not apply to them.
You certainly could do something like that, I, I don't know, I don't know if you can do it on a, just, on a lot-by-lot basis type of thing.
No, it would have to be a.
Yeah, there's got to be something in the zoning bylaw that allows for it to happen, either by area defined, or something written in the bylaw, um, I, I don't know how you.
Because the ZBA.
It should just be, I mean, you know, the ZBA for most parts, you know, they've got a good head on, on their shoulders, I mean, they had some other stuff come up down Main Street that they had to turn down, because, you know, there was a five thousand square foot lot right across the Tulkon over there, that somebody wanted to, uh, basically turn into a house lot, and, you know, they looked at it, and they, there was no sewage there, there was nothing there, and, um, you know, they had to make a, you know, assessment on your budding properties and everything else around, how are you gonna get a septic system inside of here, you know, so, I think, you know, they basically denied it because of that. And there's been people in front of the ZBA trying to take some, you know, cut their properties up to, again, to make small lots out of them, um, it, it's not that it can't be done, okay, in, in that case, especially in the, the areas, when, when you get up, you know, off a lot, far a keen, a lot of small lots inside of there. There are.
Um, you know, and again, there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of re, constraints right there, just trying to put us, talk about places, try to get a septic system, and try to get one in down over, down in that area, especially on a small lot, that it's not easy to do. Um, it's, uh, is, you know, do we have to go that far down, um, the rabbit hole? Um, you know, and just say, okay, which ones can we make smaller? Or is it just, does that fall underneath the jurisdiction of the ZBA and say, okay, yeah, we'll, we'll let that go, because it's, yeah, it's.
It's surrounded by these, so this is what we got.
Right.
The ZBA is tough, because you send out the notices, and then the whole neighborhood shows up, and the ZBA says no.
Yeah, not all the time.
That's, that's kind of my point, let me get up again, that's kind of my point, is, is, if this area, again, I don't know if it does, but let's just say hypothetically, this radio, okay? That little cluster of, of eighty houses, or whatever it is, uh, thank you. Let's just say that there's a lot in there that doesn't have a house on it, and let's just say, again, for argument's sake, these are all fifteen thousand square feet lots, ten thousand, whatever, whatever the.
F thirties.
All right, so let's just say they're f thirties, let's just say, but right now, by town regs, you need sixty thousand square feet to build a house, or you go in front of the ZBA and ask for permission and say, hey, um, um, you know, I own this lot, it's thirty thousand square feet, everything else around me is thirty thousand square feet. Like you said, every town person, every, every resident around there is gonna come in and say, oh, I, I see deer in there, and I, I see turtles, and whatever, I, I don't want nobody to look, and then the ZBA says no. I don't think that person should have to go to ZBA. If you own a thirty thousand square foot lot in this area, and everything else is thirty thousand square feet, it should be by right, it should be an A and R, come in, I have thirty thousand, it's a zone for thirty thousand, by right.
Shouldn't even, shouldn't even be an A and R at that point, it should be a grandfather, if it's truly a separate lot. The thing is, what, what it comes down to is, when, when you start cutting lots up, that's, when you start.
No, yeah.
You know what I'm saying, because it, as far as I know, it's a, it's a grandfathered lot, if you, if it stayed as a separate lot the whole time.
Right.
Okay, it, it, it is technically, it was a buildable lot when they bought it, and it didn't change, if you didn't, if you didn't own this property, and you didn't own the property on either side of it, okay? And you own this lot in, in there, as long as you get the frontage over there, okay, you should be able to build on it. That's my understanding, it's basically grandfathered in, in that case.
We're always talking about, um, affordable homes, we're always talking about, you know, when you have a sixty.
I, I, I'm with you, I get what you're saying, but I don't know if there's something that we really need to go to the, to, to the extent of, of putting.
Maybe I just need to do, I just need to do a little bit more research, maybe.
Find out, but talk to, talk to, um, uh, the, no, Mr. Popoza, and ask him what is, he'll, he'll tell you right there, what, what is technically, if it's, if it's, as far as I know, is if it was always a buildable lot, and you got a fifty, and you, neither property on either side of it.
Is ever owned in common.
Never owned in common, that lot is buildable, it is.
Well, now, that new law, that new law says if it was owned in common, you can go back to the original.
You can unmerge it.
You can unmerge it, yes, if it's, if it, if it's not less than ten thousand square feet.
Yeah, then it's certainly like fifty feet of front, I forget, I forget what, I think it was seventy-five.
You need seventy-five feet of front, right, there was this whole thing that went with it, but, um, if you try to unmerge lots, and that's, that becomes something a little bit different.
That becomes a little different, I'm just, I'm just looking at the argument that we wanna make, um, we wanna make it easier for beginner homeowners to be able to put up a.
Just get one on Gene Street, they don't have sixty thousand square feet down over here on Gene Street, just put a, put a brand new house right there.
Yeah.
So, that's what I'm saying, this stuff is, the lot was, was there.
Right.
So.
Well, that, well, that's different, because that's a different zone, that Gene Street's over here in the orange, so I believe that's ten thousand, and that's a, I live over there.
Right, right.
So, they, they have.
When they put on the bottom, they're putting up on the bottom, Gene Street.
Yeah, they actually did an A and R a few years ago, that's a, that was a true buildable lot for that district, that's not, not conforming.
That, I didn't, as I'm saying, I didn't say it wasn't non-conforming, but it, it goes to my point, where if the surrounding things were this size, that lot was either standalone, or they were able to divide it, and maybe subdivide it way back when they did it.
Well, the residence, the residential village district allows for that size.
To have.
Exactly, so that wasn't non-conforming, that wasn't grand.
So everything outside of the residential district, which is yellow, is required to be sixty thousand square feet?
Correct.
I mean, you can zone more of the town, like the yellow is, is zoned, and you can get smaller lots that way.
Hmm.
That might even allow you to take your, depending where the house is, I guess, take your sixty thousand square foot lot and divide it up, but you've just gotta create the zoning.
Well, you'd need to have frontage, you'd still, I mean, I mean, it's.
It's a tough, it's a tough one, I don't, I don't have, I don't have an answer for it either way.
Doesn't sound like it's a boil, you know, boil plate thing.
That's what, that's what kind of what I'm getting at, it's, it's there, but I'm with you, I mean, if it, it's, if it, I'm believing it, I get, especially where there's water, especially with the sewage, especially with the sewage, it, it's, I wasn't over there, but we, we now, we got a, and we got ten thousand square feet in, in the village district, right, basically.
I believe so.
Yeah.
Make it five if you want, and, I mean, it, it's, there's, there's ways to.
In certain areas, you could go down to that, you could go down to five thousand, but five thousand's a pretty small lot, but you can, you can do it. You can, you can do it.
I'm just, again, I'm just looking at what Victoria has in purple, all those lots are.
It's different, that you go to, you can put, you can take those lots and go down, and, and up in that area, go down to thirty thousand square feet, like it used to be, like it was back before nineteen ninety-six, it was thirty thousand square feet. You could shrink those, you could shrink those, the size of that, you know, and go, go from sixty thousand, go down to forty-five thousand, go down to, to, to thirty thousand, you know, incrementally, and, at, at what point, um, do you do this, you know? Um, or do you just come in and go, drop it in at thirty thousand square feet, and say, this is, this is what you're allowed to do, somebody.
For the whole town, or for certain areas?
I still think it should be for certain areas, um, there's certain areas, I think, we still wanna make, try to maintain the, you know, rural aspect of it, but drop it down to thirty thou, thirty thousand square feet's a good sized lot. I mean, there's a lot of houses around, and, and pushing it.
Oh, yeah.
Before nineteen ninety-six, they're thirty thousand square foot lots. Um, when you get down off, off of Persian Avenue, down at all that, all that opened up in the back, those are all, those are all small lots. I think those are all thirty thousand square feet, that's been, those have been in for a long time.
So, in the board's opinion, is this something we should, uh, pursue? Is this something that you think there is a, uh, need for, for us to look at rezoning certain areas of this town, uh, down to what is existing, or down to thirty thousand square feet, and elim, and not elim, excuse me, not, not eliminate the sixty thousand square feet, because you're right, there's a lot of farm laying up, of, of, parts of town, that I don't wanna just all of a sudden turn into thirty thousand square foot lots.
Right.
Um, but the zones that Victoria has highlighted here, which, let's just say they're all thirty thousand.
Do you want? Ten thousand, we got a lot of ten thousand square foot lots in town, right, you go down, you go down, Wombshead Avenue, those are all small lots. The, my guess with those are ten thousand square foot lots, when you go down Wombshead Avenue, Frank, uh, you know, Park Drive, all that, uh, uh, Rock Street, all that area right through there, going down by Pope Park, those are all, those are all small. I, I, I believe those are probably ten thousand square foot lots, Hank Creedles put those back in the day.
So if they're all ten thousand square foot lots, and there's an existing unbuilt ten thousand square foot lot right now, that person can come into the ZBA and get, uh, a permit to build on that ten thousand square foot lot?
Well, it's a special permit, so they have the right to deny it, it's not guaranteed.
However, but I think if you, if you, if it, if it's.
So how do we make that by right?
I guess my question, do you, do you have to make it by right, if it's, if it's already owned? The difference would be, okay, now, it, there's a difference between, is it, is it an existing lot? Or somebody gonna be cutting off a check, chunk, chunk of their property to, to create a lot?
But if it's in the.
Those are two different.
Absolutely, that's two different things.
That's, but, so I'm getting, if you already, if you have an existing lot, okay, and you got, it's ten thousand square feet, these guys, I don't care what, they're thirty thousand square feet on each side of them, but if this was already a buildable lot at ten thousand square feet, is it, and it shows as a, as a buildable lot, as far as I know, it's grandfathered in, especially if it's not owned by this guy, and this guy, or the guy behind him.
But there are lots that are not grandfathered in, I think is, is the point here, that there are residents going to ZBA to try and build on their lots, and it's, you know, financially, it's a burden on them, and it's also not guaranteed, so not, right, it's a special permit, they have the right to be denied, so.
But those are the ones that people are cutting, cutting their lots up, trying to cut their lots up, that's, that's a different scenario.
So, let's, let's say we're looking at that scenario, and this is a lot with.
Because if you own, if you own twenty thousand square feet, and one of those lots was already ten thousand, you, by right, you've got the right to do that, in the way the new mass laws written.
But that's different.
You can unmerge those lots.
Correct, if they were merged for common ownership, but the lot was already twenty thousand, and that's the way it's been, you cannot do that by right.
Right.
The law doesn't apply, but if the, my, so, exa, exactly, so if there's a ten thousand, let's say ten thousand square foot lot in a neighborhood of five thousand square foot lots, in theory, you know, that person should be able to. in theory, you know, that person should be able to divide their lot and and make it to five thousand. If that's within the character of the neighborhood, I think that's the point here.
That's the point. She might have articulated that better than I did, but that's the point. Is if, whether it's five thousand square feet, whether it's ten thousand square feet, whether it's, whatever the square footage is of all the houses in that purple area. If that person, if somebody, if they're, again, go to ten thousand, if they're ten thousand square foot lots and this person owns twenty thousand square feet, they should be able to cut that in half and have two lots. That this lot's ten, this lot's ten, this lot's ten, and he's got twenty, he should be able to cut that in half and have two tens. By right, not having to come in and have the whole neighborhood come in and 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 influence the decision.
But you're still going to turn, it becomes an A and R, no matter how you look at it, it's still coming in front of us.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Right, but that's just, we're just endorsing that.
We're just looking at making sure that that ten thousand is surrounded by ten thousand and he's got the frontage that this that these people have. Then we say, yeah, go for it, go to town. It's when they don't, and then they have to go to ZBA, and then again, everybody in town comes, or every neighbor surrounding them comes in, oh, my kid plays baseball on that field and this guy does this and, and then before you know it, everybody's saying no, and now that person who owns the property can't do anything with it. Uh, it should be by right. If this ten thousand square foot had right, this ten thousand square, then this twenty should cut it and have two tens if everybody in the town is ten.
If you've got the road furniture to do so, yes.
It should be by right, but right now it's not. That's where I'm kind of getting at. And again, we're just using ten thousand as a kind of general discussion, whether it's twenty thousand or it's thirty thousand. In my opinion, that's what it should be. And if we do, you know, again, we don't spot zone, but if you did developments at that size, it would benefit a lot of people, I think. I don't know if I'm just climbing up the wrong tree here or or if I'm getting my point across or if it's even worth, uh, running down this road.
It's something, it's, I'm with you, it's just something that's just got to be thought about, but it just got to be calculated a little bit to see where, you know, where where it ends up. But I I know what you're saying. It's there.
We're getting sixty thousand square foot lots, which is a nice sized lot. Don't get me wrong. And I like keeping the town nice and rural and especially out in the outer sky, but.
I think that's what we should be working on further.
Is there?
But if you want growth in the town, you're going to have to do something with housing. I mean, especially with small, small lots, smaller houses. Houses are, I mean, good for me, but houses are, yeah, and they cost, it's costing a fortune now.
And they're all going to cost a fortune.
If you want growth, you're going to have to attract somebody somehow.
It none of them's cheap. I mean, we had, we had that master plan. Mr. Gasper said he looked over, Mr. Sullivan and said, what's the house sold up the street? It was like five hundred thousand dollars. And they're all little ranch houses, nine thousand, ten thousand square foot lots. So what is affordable? You know what I mean? It's affordable, but it's, I'm with you.
Because they're selling for that, doesn't mean it would cost you to build that. So, uh, I, if you're putting, you know, a thousand square foot home on on a five thousand square foot lot, a lot of beginner people can afford to put in a smaller ranch nowadays.
Yes, you're absolutely right. I'm 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 with you because I'm I'm all about that. You know, if somebody wants to put that ranch on, I've been saying that for a while, is, you know, if somebody puts in and it goes back to the conversation we had the last time, last last meeting about allowing conservation development.
Conservation subdivision.
Subdivision. Right, where you're getting, you cluster the houses and you
Save the land.
And you save and you still, and you end up with open space, you know? That's that's one of the ways to accomplish it.
I'm all for that as well.
But I think the bigger, I think the bigger picture on some of the other things is to work on, do we drop down some of these other areas, go from sixty thousand down to thirty thousand.
That's part of this conversation, yes. I think we should look at that in certain areas, and I also think we should look at some of the clusters that we have now. And again, I I don't know if I, where I can get that information, even though if there's any available lots in those clusters. There might not even be any available lots in those clusters.
I'm trying.
But I think so we need to, we need, still need to try to maintain some sort of minimum lot size, though, I still think.
Again, if you have a cluster of everybody being ten and somebody owns a piece that's twenty.
Yep.
Just for argument's sake, what if you had a development here and everything here was, this development was thirty thousand square foot lots? But the development that's next to it is sixty thousand square foot lots.
Yep.
Do you think that that's going to become an issue because now you're going to, what if there's an open lot in here? I mean, I know this whole thing is sixty thousand square feet, but are you going to be, are we just going to be giving people a reason to come in?
And ask for waivers or not?
Ask for waivers or?
I think that goes into the beginning of our discussion tonight about having that fine line, you know, because you don't want to spot zone. You don't want to have things like that. So when we think about, um, how we're going to rezone, right? You're going to need to have those fine lines. So if somebody's not in that, then they either have to go to ZBA, but they have to be careful because that's can be considered spot zoning. So that's why when we take a look at this, we need to, you know, you know, carefully consider these these areas and what the existing lots are now to make sure we're being fair and kind of.
Right, because that would be, I mean, if you were able, even if that lot was right here, you know, on this, even though this was sixty thousand square feet and for whatever reason, there was one piece of property that was carved out touching this development. Can, is it, is that going to be with this development? Is that going to be in this zone or this?
It's, when you do it, it's, again, it's, I guess, it's how it's how you draw the, it's how you draw the line.
Yeah.
It's how you draw the line, but I don't think, I I still don't think thirty thousand square feet is unreasonable.
No.
You know, in a lot of areas. Because the other thing is, everything's going to, it's, if we start striking them too small, you got school, fire, police.
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
Those are the other things we're going to watch, watch for, for the quick, potentially quick expansion.
Okay, I think we beat this horse up pretty bad.
Can't even walk.
I make a motion.
Our next meeting is Thursday, October sixteenth. I think I'll take a motion. Does anybody have anything they want to throw into the pile?
Nope. Make a motion that we adjourn.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.